It's right button. Well, we want to welcome in everybody this evening for our pre-meeting. For the planning and zoning commission for West Jordan on September fifth, twenty twenty-three. We have five out of the seven present for the pre-meeting and so we'll go ahead and get started. First on the agenda is two business items. One approval from the meeting minutes from last meeting. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. Second one is the sports warehouse whole sign relocation. Um, anybody got any questions or? Who's got that one? Um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so essentially, um, it's just a sign that's legal non-conforming because it's a pole sign in a planned community zone. Um, and then section twelve four six of city code allows for these non-conforming. Legal non-conforming signs to be replaced, um, basically as they are with some architectural elements added. Um, for a road widening, so UDA is widening nine thousand south, so that's kind of what it's for, just going over that.
So the same is the the same, the sign is exactly the same, they're just moving it correct.
It's essentially the same and then just a couple minor architectural elements.
Going through the packet, that's what it appeared to me too, so.
Yeah, size is the same and everything.
Any questions? Nope, okay. Done with the business items, next one is public hearing with final action by the planning commission. This is PhD Estates. Um, and it looks like Lisa.
That's me. Um, this has been a subdivision long in the making, we started the rezoning for this. Um, a long time ago, many years ago. Um, Mr. Dill Meyer, I assume he will be here, he has one large lot on the corner of fifteenth west. Between eighty-six hundred and eighty-six sixty south. Um, he wants to divide that into four lots. Um, there's also some protection strips owned by the city on the south end of that very small area. Um, which he is purchasing from the city and adding all of those lots together, so and splitting them to four.
Kane, questions?
I'm sorry, um. When I look at the lots, it's just odd, odd lots, is that, uh, can can that be explained or? I mean, is that is that weird or for residential odd shaped lots?
They are very odd shaped lots, um, but it was determined by the, um, the city planner that it was okay.
Because that's that's what the owner wants to do is.
Yes, um, I'm I'm not certain, but I believe his son will probably take that lot on the south and they want to keep that connected.
I see, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Yes, we are, well, we're still on number three, I've got a question.
Oh.
I know, right, disrupt everything, I was I was referring to this as the Tetris development. When I was looking at overs because the way the water shapes, I'm right there with you. Um, the question I had was. The background memo talks about how the owner wants to stay in one of the homes. And it meets all the setbacks and everything, but there's also a shop, does the shop also meet any setback or other requirements?
Yes, yes.
Perfect. I guess we are on item number four, excuse me, text amendment. Larry?
So, um, excuse me, uh, the. State legislature last year passed a law that will not go on effect until February. Then it is in regards to the number of reviews that a municipality can do upon a subdivision. Uh, and so I really won't go into that because that's not what we're talking about, but what we're talking about tonight is they put in. A provision in the law that a review can start over. If there's a material change to the plans to, however, the legislature did not. Define what material change means. And so rather than under under Utah code if. Um, something is not specifically defined, then it leaves it up to the developer to define. More or less, now Duncan may disagree with my interpretation of that, but that's. Really what it means if it's not specific, then if it's too general, then the tie goes to the runner, which should be the developer. And rather than leave this so nebulous because material change could. I could probably poll everyone in this room and a material change would probably mean something different to each and every one of us. Out of an abundance of caution, the city chose to, uh, write a definition of what material changes. Now, this is in the interim, I don't know what the legislature is going to do next legislative session. They may come back with a definition of it, so this may be back in front of you next spring or something, but. If they don't, we just wanted to be sure that we were defining in West Jordan what we define as a material change. And so I'll go through what all the the particulars are of material change at the regular meeting, but that's. Uh, the gist of the whole ordinance requirement because we just want to protect the city. And and going forward because we don't want somebody to come back and say. No, no, that's not a material change, you know, even though they could be changing many things. If we can point to specific criteria in our ordinance. And then as a group, a review group, we can make the determination that it is a material change and it needs to. Go back to the starting line and then the last part of this ordinance, um. We we left it out, I don't know, years ago about when impact fees are collected. It has been the practice of this city to collect stormwater impact fees with subdivisions. Because that's when most of the impact for stormwater comes in, that's when the infrastructure is put in, the roads, that's when. The impact of the system is, it wasn't really clear. And we just wanted to make that abundantly clear that anytime somebody does a subdivision. That is when they pay the impact fees before they can record the plot of the subdivision now other impact fees. For instance, on a residential subdivision, which I'll just talk about quickly, the impact fees, police. Fire, uh, water, sewer. Parks and roads are all collected with the building permit per lot. But overall, the stormwater impact fee is collected with the whole subdivision. So that is something that the developer pays rather than, uh, the home builder, so any questions at this point?
I have a question, what, um, can you tell us a little bit about what prompted the legislature to make such a a ruling or law? Sorry.
Do you want to take it, Scott? Um, I think it's, I think the legislature, to put it nicely, is. There's many elected officials who are in the development business. And they were probably, to them, time is money, honestly. And I think that they felt the four, five, six, seven, eight reviews is excessive. And so what they have done is say after two reviews is deemed approved.
Only two?
Only two, well, it'd be two permanent, two final, there's a three, Scott, excuse me, two, so four reviews altogether. And so what that does is it forces a municipality to be very, very. Uh, you know, and out of good practice or trying to be a good partner, team player with them, we would. You know, say we wouldn't require a title report, right, when they submit things, they could submit that later. We can't do that anymore because it's everything is going to have to be in. The completeness review is going to take much longer. Because we can't be caught where things are missed because we're out of time.
Right.
And so it was really driven by, uh, the development community. That's what was, that's what, I I don't know Duncan and Scott, am I wrong in that assessment or is it offensive to anyone?
No, I think that's pretty good, I mean, and so the reason this material change is so important to kind of tie it together is that. Um, the theory is we need to get closer and closer with each review to everything being finalized. But if we're on the last review and there's still five or ten different issues at stake. And all of a sudden, the applicant makes a change. Which maybe necessitates that instead of five or ten red lines or changes, now we have twenty changes. Gives us the chance to go back and say, okay, if you're going to make a major change, which means there's a lot more that needs to finalize. Then we can't just be on the last review, we've got to have the ability to go back. As opposed to if somebody is gradually going from ten to five to three to one and oh, we're good to go. Um, and, uh, and so that's the determination in state law is. If there's a material change, right, it's not just that they changed a couple of lot lines, but they literally went from. Uh, one configuration to something that's totally different and with a totally different number of lots and. A totally different meter size or I don't know, all at the same time and it's like, whoa, that's a completely new application. We almost need to start back at the beginning as opposed to we're just fine tuning something that hasn't materially changed. That's that's what this is about is to preserve our option as a city to go back to an earlier part of the process. If there's major changes, uh, as opposed to just fine tuning and getting closer to a final result.
I have another question. Um, well, first of all, so you're saying that if there is a material change, you get to. Have, uh, the four reviews over again or at least two re- the reviews over again, you start over. If there's a material change, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yeah, you go back sometime earlier in the process as opposed, you you, the applicant would lose their ability to move forward, so to speak, if there was that material change.
Okay, that's, that's good, um, I'm just curious. Um, are a lot of cities defining material change now? Do you know, I mean, I know it's not really relevant, but I was just wondering if.
We're not aware of any others.
Other cities doing this?
No.
Pardon?
Yeah, doesn't mean that.
Doesn't mean that they are not.
Right, okay, thank you.
I I have one question, as I was re- reviewing it, uh, maybe it's more common than anything else, I was worried initially. That we were taking one nebulous word, material, and replacing with another one significant in reading through it. But I think that that got resolved, uh, within the document itself because there's six or seven specific criteria that that define what significant is. Uh, so to that end, I think it was extremely well written, put together very fair to every party involved on it. Um, any other questions? Great, do we have, uh, training today? Excellent.
Okay, so for the training, uh, I did pass out a, uh. Long but five pages of, uh, materials you can go through on your own. Um, the first three pages is basically the main parts of the updated conditional use permit. Uh, portions of the, um, city code. And there's another half page at the end that shows the main applicable Utah code section provision. And then you'll see a chart on the second and last page. Which identifies some of these types of applications, we talked a little bit last meeting about. Subdivision or site plans, right, and we were looking in particular. Um, some of the language for how we explain it to the public and. We can still fine tune that, we can come up with some other language for the conditional use permits to explain it to the public too. But one of the issues that came up last time, because I know you wanted to follow up on last time a little too. Is, uh, explaining these standards or criteria sometimes we call them. Because for the different types of applications, they mean different things, right? So you'll see on that chart. For subdivision or site plan, those, and and every staff report. Identifies those criteria or standards, right, and the analysis is based upon them. And the reason for that, those standards for a subdivision or site plan is to identify the applicable city code requirements. Um, and then if they're met or not, right, and if staff is saying that they recommend approval, that means that for each of those criteria, they've made findings. Uh, is what we've called in the past, now we pretty much call it, I think, staff analysis and then staff recommendation. But they've analyzed those standards or criteria. And and they've made findings that, you know, for this. Uh, as an example, uh, this particular city code section dealing with lighting on the site plan or this one dealing with access or minimum lot size. And they go through an analysis saying it's met because the. Minimum lot size was one and this had one acre and this has one and a quarter or or whatever, so many feet of setback. And they have more than that. Um, and that's what the criteria for it's just are the standards, it's a way to identify and go through. All of the code requirements, so if there's a concern that somebody has. They should go through and look at the city code provision. And one of you could bring up and say, okay, I noticed that in your analysis, there were sessions such. But I wonder, did they really meet that standard or criteria and talk about that specific code section? So when it comes to a site plan or subdivision, if there's a concern, we're probably talking about. A specific city code requirement, even though the the standards are a way to kind of remind ourselves what are the applicable code requirements, right? For conditional use permit, and you'll notice that's in the middle part of the paperwork. But section thirteen dash seventy dash seven, the standards for determination. Under subsection C, there's a list of like one through eight. Those are the standards we look at, uh, when it comes to conditional use permits. And again, it's a way of identifying what's relevant. And what's relevant when it comes to conditional use permits is what are the possible detrimental effects, right? And then what are the appropriate conditions to mitigate them? So again, as the staff does their staff report, they're using those eight conditions in this case. So one dealing with size and shake, you'll see the the bold that I have, the requirements for the zoning district, the. Access to streets and highways, public safety services like police and fire. Um, they go through those eight criteria and that the criteria. Are basically in my mind, they're a way for us, uh, for staff and then you guys as planning commission members to identify what are those detrimental. Effects, right? Another helpful thing is at the top of that same page, so the back of the first page, the second page, where it says types of conditions. So the conditions are. Well, first of all, the detrimental effects are the ones in bold, right, so visual noise, lighting. Uh, increased volumes or nature and traffic activity. Um. Smells, those kinds of things, right, and then what's underlying, those are the possible conditions, you know, building. Locations, open spaces, buffer expenses. Um, you know, whatever it might be, hours of operation, methods of operation. Most of them are what, at least Larry and I like to refer to as time, place, manner type things, right? Things that can, solutions, if you will, but, uh, we call them conditions to mitigate. Those potential detrimental effects. Um, so that those are some helpful tools in identifying what the. Uh, detrimental effects are, what the potential conditions are to. Uh, mitigate them, they don't have to be completely eliminated, but at least mitigate or help them. Um, and obviously the other help is that when you get a conditionally permitted staff, you know, staff has already identified a few detrimental effects. Effects, some possible conditions. Uh, but then your job as staff, once that happens is you look and see and well, maybe this one isn't a detrimental effect. Or actually, there's an additional one that staff did not identify and. And maybe here's a condition that's a little bit less stringent or that ought to be considered. But it gives you a good starting point, right, the staff report. Uh, there are times where you may just, and you have, just agree with the staff report as is. But the main thing that you'll notice in our city code and the state code is you still want to create a record, right? And it's, uh, the the key state statute language is established by substantial evidence. Substantial evidence, a lot of times for something simple, might just be you guys talking about it, right? Might be a public hearing comment and then you react to it, but so it, as long as you identify it through some discussion. And then when you get some emotion, you're identifying it in the motion. Um, or if you adopt the staff report and use the recommended motion, it probably already automatically has that, but. But it's still helpful regardless of what you need to have at least some discussion. Sometimes substantial evidence means something more than just the the basic discussion, right? We had a conditional use, what was it, two years ago, I don't know, a year, two or three ago. Uh, had something to do with, uh. What's the name of that reception center kind of a thing? And remember, there was a lot of rambunctious activity, for lack of a better term, that was happening near, right next to it. And and then it was affecting some of the residential neighbors and there was some police. Uh, records and the study, fortunately, a deputy chief or somebody came and explained all the data, which was helpful. That data was, uh, incorporated, I think, into the minutes, into the record and based upon that record and explanation by that deputy chief. I think then the, uh, planning commission did on advice of the staff, and maybe it changed a little bit. Basically, you adopted some conditions that dealt with with that, right, with that detrimental effect on the neighbors, the noise, the whatever. Uh, but it wasn't willy-nilly, right, it was based on actual discussion, actual records of here's the number of police calls and the nature of the calls. Incorporated into the record and the purpose for it is in part is if whoever got sued, then a judge wants to make sure, okay. Did you just make that up or was it based, no, that was based on a police study? And here it is, and if a judge looks at that. It's a big check mark for him, okay, great, you know, because the judge isn't there to substitute his or her judgment for ours. His or her job, the judge's job is to make sure that we jump through the hoops and on those things that required a little bit more evidence in the record, we actually had that evidence. We can prove that it was taken into account. So that's kind of the main thing and, uh, that you can read through the rest of its journals unless you have questions, but. I wanted to kind of go through some hypothetical fact patterns unless you had some questions first, we might only get to one, we can do some others. Another time, but, uh, any questions first?
No, let's go with the patterns.
Okay, fact patterns, got to love those. So the first one you'll notice fact pattern one is a metal recycling facility, which is both a site plan and the CUP. Um, it's proposed to be in a MP, which is kind of like a light manufacturing zone. Next to an R one single family residential neighborhood. And you can see there what the staff report identified, one detrimental effect is noise, one is minor smells, another was the building location. Um. And with noise, they just, you know, hours of operation, right, um, whatever it might be, eight to six or seven or. Um, but there are some times when you don't technically need to identify detrimental. Well, you don't need to impose certain things as conditions if they're already required by code, right? Um, and the noise regulation, can we already adopt by code the county noise regulation, so that doesn't need to be a condition. They already have to require, uh, you know, comply with that, it's required by law. Um, but hours of operation, um, minor smells, in this case, staff is, uh, recommending. If, and especially if the applicant is voluntarily offering something, hey, we got this special piece of equipment. Eighty percent of similar, uh, companies use this piece, we're we're willing to use it. We'll pay for it, should mitigate most of the smells and and if they're willing to offer something, in this case, staff says, yeah, that's probably adequate. Did a little research on it and then building location, making sure it's not rights close to residential, but maybe some buffering and farther away. If that was based on those facts and that staff recommendation. What what would you think as a planning commission, do you agree with it, would you add something, would you change something? What do you think?
I think as long as all of the conditions have been met and they've mitigated at least some of the issues that were brought up, I think that would be appropriate to go ahead and prove it.
Another fact pattern that you had in the recent past, it was, uh, we have the gun. Uh, facility indoor range, then we have that one, um. And, uh, and I think they voluntarily wanted to use a certain piece of, uh. Equipment, certain kind of buffering, certain kind of thickness of wall material. Which was going to mitigate a lot of that, right, and, uh. So that's similar to this fact pattern in a way, uh, and then there was. We had some material that we, information we put in the record that showed that that had been used successfully in other locations, so again, it wasn't just made up. But anything else you can identify that would? Because the other thing you got to take into account too is sometimes, uh, something might well mitigate. But it may be ten times the cost of something else that could equally or almost equally mitigate those detrimental effects, right?
I I want to look at the history of the, what was property used for in the past before now. Okay, great, like, was it always a, a recycling facility or was it used for something else? And, um, is this something that's being dropped on those residents that are nearby or is it something that is, um. Kind of just a a small change in what's being. In what was being used for versus what it will be used for now.
Right.
I think that that has a big bearing on it.
You're right, yeah, if it's instead of new construction, if it's refitting an existing facility, yeah. All right, that's probably about all the time we have, unfortunately, the that we could do those other fact patterns another time or whatever, so, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have two minutes?
All right, we are adjourned for two minutes.
All right, we are here to call to order. The September fifth, uh, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting for the city of West Jordan. We've uh finished our pre-meeting, moving to the general meeting. First item on the agenda, business items, approved minutes. Commissioner Hatch.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Shelton?
I second that motion.
Yeah, I've got a motion, Commissioner Hatch, a second, Commissioner Shelton, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second item of business, Sportsman Warehouse Pole Sign Relocation. Uh, we're going straight to Megan for an update on that?
Yes, so this is for a replacement of a legal non-conforming sign affected by roadway widening, which is how it's, which is a specific section in code um for these signs. Um, and this sign at fourteen seventy-five West, nine thousand South, um, falls under this specific section of code um, because it's a legal non-conforming sign, um, because it's a pole sign in a planned community zone, which are not permitted under our current ordinances. Um, so essentially, um, forward. And that's a sign location and this section of code essentially allows them to uh move or replace the sign, move it back um for the, to allow for the road widening, um, as long as it's not increasing in size or height and it adds some architectural features. And it also um calls for the sign materials and design to be approved uh or reviewed by the Design Review Committee and approved by the Planning Commission. And so essentially, they are proposing to move this specific sign uh back about twenty feet um, per what UDA is telling them. Um, so this is the current sign. And then this is the sign they're proposing, so it's going to be the same uh area and height. And as far as architectural features, uh you can see there just adding this kind of aluminum cap that's black. Um, and then this base that's going to be uh just kind of cement tiles that's going to match the existing building. And I've just included this picture for reference, um, so I assume it'll be kind of matching this area here. Um, and then this was reviewed by the Design Review Committee, August twenty-second, and they forwarded on to the Planning Commission without any recommendate, uh, recommended changes, so. Uh, that's all.
Thank you.
No questions?
So this is just a, a business item, we'll open it up for any questions for uh.
My question is, is it good to have coffee in a shooting center? I mean, I just. All right, never mind then, okay, we'll take coffee.
You know, somewhat related, as I was looking at this, I'm thinking, what is with all of the coffee places that have skull and crossbones or this? Or what is it over here, the, anyway, yeah. Uh, any questions, Commissioner Richards?
Yeah, actually, um, the Alpha Coffee is out of business, so it's, they're, they don't, they.
Oh, okay. Well, I just know the coffee's not there anymore. So I guess they're taking the existing sign and they're going to still re, they're just going to reuse it even though it has Alpha Coffee on there. Yeah, okay.
Right, uh, any uh motions? Commissioner Quinney?
I move that we approve this item.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion, Commissioner Quinney, second, Commissioner Hatch, for your discussion on the motion. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Megan. Um, I failed to mention at the beginning, all commissioners are present for the record. Uh, moving on to our first public hearing for the night, final action by the Planning Commission. We have PHD Estates at fifteen seventeen West, eighty-six hundred South, a preliminary subdivision plant with four lots on one point one three six acres in an R one eight zone with Paul Duremeyer, the applicants. Uh, you are welcome to come up and uh present your application, sir. Uh, if you're not prepared, we, we can turn the time over to our staff.
The right button.
I am, excuse me, I'm Dale Bennett with Benchmark Engineering. We are the civil engineers and surveyors for Paul from this project. And uh, yeah, it's a, he's got one point three eight acres or one point one three six acres and wants to been working with the staff on getting all the information that they needed for four lots on this. It's an R one eight, so most of the, all four lots are quite a bit bigger. There's one that's close to the eight thousand square feet, and the other ones are bigger, but, um, yeah, I'm just, we've been working, working with them, um, my, one of my engineers has been working diligently with all of the staff. And I think we've got most everything taken care of for it and I think it'll be a nice improvement. Fifteen hundred West is really skinny right now, and so that'll be extremely nice. So anybody have any questions for me or Paul?
We'll invite you back if anything comes up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Lisa?
As, as Dale said, um, this subdivision is going to come with road widening on the north and on the east. Um, it's going to add some sidewalk curb and gutters. Um, I'm sorry, I, I just lost my train of thought there for a second. Um, it does meet all of, all of our requirements. Um, the smallest lot is just barely over eight thousand square feet, which is the minimum. Um, it's got one about eighty-four hundred square feet, and then the two on the end are the largest. Um, we've had some complaints from, from neighbors about the current fifteen hundred West, how narrow it is. And they say that it's um, that it's really unsafe the way it is. But, but this development will um, will make that safer, we'll clean it up a little bit. Um, adding those other two lots along fifteen hundred West will definitely clean up the lot. Um, as it is now, it's been used for a lot of storage. Um, we've just feel that this is going to be a very good addition to the, to the existing neighborhood. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, questions for staff? All right, appreciate it. Uh, either this is very, very simple or we're very, very quiet today. All right, this is a public hearing. And uh, so we will now open this up to the public to uh share your thoughts on this. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. Um, if you're here, feel free to come up to the podium and uh address the planning commission. Or if you're online, raise your hand and we will call on you. Feel just state your name for the record, it's already on, thankfully.
My name is Laura Himashda. I've lived directly across the road from the property for about thirty-eight years. Prior to the applicant purchasing the property, the property was a working horse farm for decades. The several years that the applicant has lived here, he has ruined our small four homes on our road due to his junk, eleven trucks, two cars, four trailers, five RVs, five open trailers, four storage lots, one very large dog in an unfenced yard, about thirty feral cats, seven sheds, one van, five boats, several tires, one minivan, bicycle, several converted horse stalls with broken windows, two jet skis, unused furniture, three foot weeds, metal pipes, many tree limbs cut and left on my road, which is fifteen hundred West. A bobcat going all hours, both day and night, including weekends, and a truck with a trailer filled with bricks came today. These are the items I see from my front door, my front window, and every time I come and go from my home. Upon buying the property, the applicant asked to have an RV on the property while he and his son remodeled the home. It took several years. RV is still there and used. He, I know he must install three curbs and gutters as well. He uses a septic tank, was told the water line would have to come from thirteen hundred West and not before adjoining streets. The applicant has no license that I'm aware of to run a storage lot or junkyard on the property. No business sign either. I have seen countless people come and go onto the property with vehicles as well. Seen people living in the RVs too, the noise is unbearable at times. Applicant has said to neighbors that his son recently moved to Saint George with applicant's money. And apparently, the applicant and elderly cancer survivor is going to be the general of the project, only what I was told. Question, how long would the building of four homes, curbs, gutters, and anything else needed for this project take to finish? He was asked to put gravel down for all the vehicles that were supposed to be licensed um, to him, and that took years as it was. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no further comment, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and bring this uh conversation back to the commission. I would like to uh just ask a couple of questions of staff, Lisa, put you on the spot. Uh, one was a note about the septic system. Uh, if with this new subdivision setup, that is, this all now going to be tied to a sewer, is that accurate?
Yes, everything will be on sewer.
Uh, and then regarding the how long to build, that, that's a difficult one for us to answer because it ends up being as lots are sold and builders are procured to come in and actually put the homes in. How uh, walk through that process? We'll get the subdivision plot recorded, but then it's a matter of as the lots are sold.
Correct.
Doesn't the curb and gutter have to be first?
I'm sorry, it's a two-year expiration on the plat, they would have to start something within two years.
So within two years, that's a Commissioner, uh, thank you. Within two years, we're looking at the sidewalk, the gutter, uh, probably stubs for utilities, those kinds of things. And then as the uh homes come in, they'll need to get building permits through that process.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and then the last one I had, just a, a notion on code enforcement. It sounds like we've had a couple of issues here. This isn't something that's necessarily tied to the subdivision plat, but I think appropriate just to follow up. This is something for code enforcement to go through? Is there a process there, what's the?
Code enforcement has been involved in the past, I haven't heard of anything recent.
Okay, so, correct, Lisa is correct, there have been a number of uh open cases on this property. Um, if uh, if you would like to stick around, we can chat after the meeting and they'd be happy to, to get you more information.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have. Commissioner Shelton, do you have anything else or any further comments?
I just wanted to ask for further clarification on the uh septic system. The three new homes will be on s- sewer, will the, will the existing homes switch from septic to sewer?
It will be required.
Thank you.
Any further questions or a motion? Commissioner Quinney?
I know they make a motion if we can get it on the screen, because I couldn't log into this, I can't see it on my computer.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I think I have a question, I'm not sure if this is a question. So if they go, if the curb and gutter is started and none of the lots are sold, the curb and gutter still has to start regardless of anything, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then if once the curb and gutter is done, then the lots go up for sale? The, so the sewers connected, all of that is done in preparation for the homes being, the lots being sold?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Are we ready now?
No, sorry. Um, Julie, could you put up the criteria for this proposal on the screen?
We don't have the criteria on the slide, it is in your staff report.
I would just like the Planning Commission just to take a quick look at the criteria, just to be doubly sure here. I read the criteria before this meeting, but glancing over them again, I don't see any, any problems with meeting the criteria. And it seems to me that this project uh will greatly enhance the neighborhood. Um, as long as it's not on a timely basis, so I'm ready to vote.
All right. All right, no, yep, okay.
So I, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Lynn, I think this looks like great improvement to the neighborhood. The neighborhood should be pretty excited about uh getting this thing moving forward. Uh, based on that, I move the Planning Commission approve the preliminary major subdivision plot for PHD Estates Residential Subdivision located at eighty-six fifty-two South, fifteen hundred West, with the conditions of, and re, and requirements of the approval listed in this report.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynn? Second. All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Quinney, a second from Commissioner Lynn, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh, moving on to the final agenda item and another public hearing. We have a public hearing with the Planning Commissioner Recommendation with Final Action by the City Council. Uh, text amendment, uh, material change definition and stormwater impact key clarification to amend the two thousand nine West Jordan City Municipal Code, sections fourteen two-two and fourteen two-three, and add a definition for material change in the section thirteen two-three with citywide applicability. The city is the applicant, we'll turn the time over to Larry.
Uh, thank you, so as I explained in the pre-meeting, there was uh some changes to law that will affect the city in February. And one of, the main change is the number of um reviews that a city can do on a subdivision plat. Uh, you know, being two, preliminary and two, final, and and then the law said that the, if there's a material change to the plansets, which I'll go over here in a second, then the reviews can start back over again. Now, it doesn't mean if somebody's applied for a final application, it doesn't mean they go all the way back to preliminary unless they completely ignore the condition of the planning commission. And so that will be at the discretion of the, the group and, and I'll go over that here. So first of all, I want to go through these bullet points really quickly. Material change must be part of a complete land use application. And what I mean by a complete uh land use application is that it must meet zoning. So it has to be applicable, it has to be uh permitted in the zone that it is uh in. You know, for instance, we don't do residential subdivisions in an industrial zone. Uh, but if it's meets zoning, then that's fine. If it meets all of the provisions of code, and in West Jordan, we have put all of our code provisions in checklists. And that, what that means is, what I mean by provisions of code is not only the zoning, but also engineering standards, landscape standards, any of the standards that um, I believe most of the planning commissioners have seen over the last few years have been adopted, has to meet all provisions of those code and the fee is paid. So it's pretty simple in Utah, what a complete, paid application means. Meet zoning, all provisions of the code are met and a fee is paid. Now, what I mean by a complete land use application is the staff, when we take that application and we will review it for completeness. And as I said in the pre-meeting, sometimes, you know, there is a provision in the code that requires a title report. The title report is generally only useful for sixty days. We, and so we only require those uh with a final, and sometimes we'll waive that condition. We, and so we only require those, uh, with a final and sometimes we'll waive that condition. Uh, either early on in the final process, it's generally not done at preliminary, but, uh, I guess suppose we could. But we generally say we'll bring that in with the next review because we don't want you to have to do multiple title reports. But we will no longer do that because now we have to make sure that this application is complete. Even before it comes to the planning commission. So that's, that's the, you know, first thing that we're going to have to be very, very, uh, firm. And that also subdivision site plans, zone changes, land use map amendments, everything needs to be complete application before we accept it. Uh, as for review, the material chair must be determined by the review team. Uh, consisting of the planner, who's the project manager, uh, the engineer, we have two engineering groups on the review uh, team, both the utility engineer and the public works engineer, uh, real property administrator. Uh, our fine fire marshal back here or his protege, uh, he and other city employees. Um, you know, so the determination is not left to one person. It's not just Larry Gardner saying, no, you, it's not a material change or that is a material change. Because there are a lot of things I don't deal with that Paul does, that he can say, no, this is a major problem. It needs to go back because it's, it's completely changing the way things are protected firewise. And so it's wise to have the whole group and in West Jordan, we're, we're very fortunate to have a whole group that looks at plansets rather than one or two people. You know, Duncan's part of that, that review team also. Now, the material chair must be, uh, a revision defined as altering, adding to, taking away from, eliminating, or reacting to a denial, et cetera. So I can't really put adjectives behind those, but yeah, any of those could be. Uh, uh, you know, they could eliminate, you know, maybe a hydrant or five hydrants. And Paul saying, no, this is not gonna fly. I'm not gonna look at this on a third review because we don't have a third review. So you're going back to zero, you know? And so that, that's just a gross example of, so it's something that the team will determine. So you can feel comfortable that it's just not one person doing it. Uh, material change must revise the approved plan. So what's an approved plan? We do a lot of development plans here. I'll say somebody turns in a subdivision plan that is, uh, completely contrary to a development plan. Then first of all, we wouldn't even review it, but if they're on their second review, we'd say, no, you're going back to, till you get this right. A decision of the planning commissioner, city council. Uh, you guys make a lot of decisions that we need to follow. Because you are an approval body in the city and we're administrative body. Or the city council makes a lot of decisions, you know, and they can't be on their second review and say, no, we're not gonna do that. Uh, connections are utility demands. You know, engineering designs, third-party approvals. So the connection to utility or engineering that's, you know, are they changing how the sewer, you know, some of these can be major. Uh, well, we don't wanna do the sewer that way because it's too expensive, so we're gonna go this way. Well. Between plan reviews, that can be very difficult for a civil engineer because they haven't reviewed the other way. You know, and Ammon, you're probably very familiar with this. Is, uh, a lot of these utility connections take a lot of review, review of master plan. Is there capacity in those lines? And so they really need to come in correct, uh, the first time. Engineering designs, are they changing road signs, that type of thing. Third-party approvals, that may be an approval of, uh, say there's an approval of Salt Lake County required, a flood, flood control requirement. They can't change those midstream. Their suggestions made by the applicant, they might say, well, I'm a second review, but I decided I wanna do this now instead of that. That we didn't know about at the beginning, or maybe even the planning commission didn't know about. Can say, well, you're free to do that, but you're going back to the planning commission to ask them, because that's your jurisdiction. Changes in, in use in the plan. You know, they were gonna build a, a data center that didn't use any water and now they want a canned green beans that uses a lot of water. That's a material change. And these are all gross examples, so forgive me, I'm just, you know, density changes, that's an obvious one. You know, they come through the planning commission, say we're gonna be three units per acre and then they submit final. You know, we can make a lot more money at seven units per acre, but you guys were never aware of that. Uh, changes and improvements for amenity, where we're gonna have a water park in the middle of the subdivision and now we're gonna put a slippery slope, that type of thing.
May I interrupt? Quick question.
Yes.
So if, if, let's say they said there's going to be commercial in part of this subdivision and then they decide they no longer want commercial because it's not the time for commercial and they wanna put homes there, is that a material change?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And then, um, other items identified by the review team, you know, there may be something that, that Paul or Nate or Greg Davenport or Duncan say that, whoa, this is a big change. This is gonna cost the city a lot of money. We need to go back to, to score one with this. And then finally, if the applicant doesn't like it, they always have an appeal. Uh, like it or not, I'm never the final deciding factor. I'm not altruistic or benevolent dictator. So everyone can always appeal the decision of planning staff. And what that appeal is, is it would be to the appropriate department. Now, if it's a utility decision, say water sewer, storm sewer, that would be Greg Davenport. If it was a road issue and other public works, it'd be, uh, Nate Nelson or, no, Brian Clegg, excuse me. If it's a zoning planning to be Scott, you know, so on and so forth. Who would be your, who would have? James Tiff Maxfeld would be the appeal. And those guys like it or not, they can always appeal above them. They can go to district court. Is that where the appeal is after? So Duncan has written the ordinance, so the appeal is right to court. So, somebody always has due process in the city if they don't like it. So are there any questions on this? Go ahead.
So, what if an applicant wanted to, oh, let's say, change the type of siding on a building or change the type of fencing? Does that constitute a material change?
Um, it could.
You know? I just wanted to see something that this, maybe not quite so impactful as one fire hydrant versus ten.
Yeah, so, so for instance, we had a plant development that went to the design review committee and the planning commission and they showed all red brick. Okay, and then they get in final, they say, oh, it's too expensive. We wanna do mostly final siding, which we don't allow in the city, but it's an example. That would be to me a material change. And we would, we would, uh, we would certainly take it through the group, you know, in our weekly meeting to determine, but I think that if it was a decision of the planning commission, if they presented something to you and the design review committee that was going to be designed in a certain way and you approved it, then it behoves us and staff to say, well, we didn't make that decision. You need to go back and ask the planning commission. So I would say yes.
Thank you.
And then finally, in this, uh, ordinance, um, we have had a little bit of, and Duncan, do you wanna kind of go over this a little more on this?
Yeah, so the second smaller piece to this city code text amendment is this issue about impact fees. Unlike the other one where it's new language reacting to Senate Bill one seventy four. So we're reacting to state law and implementing and filling in a definition where none exists. This one's a little different. We're trying to just make, um, city code match what our current practice is. Um, and, and in this instance, the city code was not a hundred percent clear. So the current language talks about how prior payment of, you know, all applicable, uh, fees and including impact fees. Well, it, it just said impact fees and our practice is we only charge stormwater impact fees at the subdivision uh, application level, and then we wait to charge the other six fees, police, fire, parks, stormwater, water, sewer, transportation, whatever the, I mean, other than stormwater rather, that, those other six of the seven. Um, those we charge at the building permit level. And, uh, so it was a little ambiguous, so we wanted to make it a hundred percent clear. No, it's just stormwater that we apply at that point. Um, and then, you know, the remainder of building, uh, it just wasn't clear in the, so it's not really in this practice change, it's just a code change which would meet current, not just current practice, probably the last twenty years of practice, I don't know. Um, but, uh, a lot of times that's what we're trying to do is match up so that what we do actually matches what the code says. So.
Question on if there's a material change, is there an additional fee involved?
Uh, we, uh, I guess in theory one could be charged, but it might, the way the code reads it doesn't envision an extra charge. Um, my understanding is unless the city council adopts a whole new line in the, uh, in the consolidated fee schedule, there would be no additional fee.
But you're.
But, yeah, under, under West Jordan code now, they're, they're entitled to two reviews.
Yeah, so.
Not anything above and beyond, they're charged, was it ninety six dollars and eighty cents an hour or something? Yeah. Per department.
I think your time is worth more. I mean.
Well, that's per, per reviewer.
Yeah.
Per reviewer.
Per reviewer, yeah.
I forgot, we already had that provision in, so yeah, that would apply, wouldn't it? Yeah.
So if, if they're, if they keep coming back with another material change and your time to review is being then compensated?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if that's, since that's already in our fee schedule, we don't have to adopt anything new to deal with that situation. Is what we're saying, right, Larry? Let's go. Okay.
Yeah, any other questions for Larry, right? No. Sit there, we'll call you back up when anything comes up. Uh, this has been noticed as a public hearing, so we will now open this up to the public. Feel free to step forward if you'd like to discuss this item. You have three minutes or, uh, raise your hand on nine. Is there anybody on Zoom? Should take another. Alright, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the planning commission for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Hatch?
Uh, we'll go ahead and make a motion. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission board a positive recommendation to the city council for this application.
Commissioner Quinney?
That's why we called me first, so I could pre-second this. I second the motion.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Quinney. Any further discussion on the motion? Uh, all in favor? Aye. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Thomas?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
We are adjourned.